Motion approved agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, our personal appearance, uh, Mr. Houston Meyer is gonna be here, but he's gonna be a little bit late. He, uh, had an emergency to take care of, so we're just gonna postpone that for a little bit and move on. Is that okay with you, Martin?
You shouldn't end the agenda. Yes, that's okay with me. He just, we're gonna be quick anyway, you can do it under public comments.
Okay. You sure?
I'm sure he can do it under public comments.
Okay. So you're up.
Um, you recall, uh, those of you who attended the Corps of Engineers meeting, one of the elements of our being able to do work with the money that's set aside for matching the core, uh, levy project, the recreation element, uh, requires a memorandum of understanding with the Corps of Engineers so that we identify, uh, what it is we're gonna be doing. And since they haven't produced their filing report yet, those details are not available. But they sent me a sample memorandum of understanding, uh, that we would use less the specific information on, on, on the work that we would be doing. So I reviewed it, I'll send it to Mark for review when we get the more detailed information. And, uh, and they, they, you know, once again, they promising it'll be done into the month. Um, I sent out requests for qualifications for the water tower design, I've received one. Talked to two other engineering firms that are gonna, uh, bid it. Uh, the bids will be open on March the 26th. Some of you knew, uh, know, uh, Tim Good. Uh, Tim was with the National Park Service, uh, I think I may have reported that he took another job. Uh, we had a, a, a farewell lunch for him at Audubon and, uh, had conversation. And he's still like, this is, this project is kind of labor of love for him. Uh, he was talking about how he expects things to progress in, in, in the Senate. Sandra sent out an email today and let her report on the activity in the House relative to, to, to the establishment of the National Park Service. Uh, Tim's gonna take a job at the Lincoln Home, uh, in, in Springfield, we're not where it is, is it in Springfield? Okay. And, uh, and, and said at our meeting that, that should his employers direct him, that, that he could oversee, uh, the staffing of, of, of whatever is established here. And we said, from Springfield? And he said, yeah, we don't, our supervisors aren't necessarily on the site of the projects that they supervise, 'cause they'll have more than one. And so that, he said, you know, Spring, it's, it's really not, they have people who are supervising park facilities that live or work, their main office is further away, uh, than St. Genevieve is from Springfield. Of course, that decision in ours to make, and, uh, we can make suggestions, but, uh, given his affinity for St. Genevieve, I think that would be a good thing if they chose to do that. Uh, I reported at our last meeting that the Industrial Development Corporation and Chamber were, uh, desirous of addressing what they perceived to be a, um, problem in, in St. Genevieve County and city, uh, that is, uh, lack of housing in that hundred and sixty to two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar range. Uh, we hear from Tom Keim at the hospital that, uh, they have employees who, you know, qualified, technical or, uh, you know, doctors who wanna live in the area but can't find, uh, the housing that, that, in that range, you know, that they can afford. I'm not sure about a doctor not affording it, but anyway, uh, the, uh, and they, and they're curious as to what might be done, and we talked about whether Progress Parkway property could be used for residential purposes. Uh, developer, a guy I've known for many years, uh, local developer, uh, attended the meeting and, uh, said that, uh, the cost of developing water and sewer for lots these days is, it could be twenty-five thousand dollars a lot, which, uh, it's been a long time since I developed subdivision, but that, that's a lot. It's a per lot. Uh, and if you wanna, you know, if you got building costs at a hundred and twenty-five thou- or, uh, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, and I don't know, Bob, is that high or low or average?
I see them from a hundred to-
Hundred and seventy-five.
Okay, so let's just say a hundred and twenty-five. And, and you, you know, you build a, a, a twelve-hundred, you know, square foot house, you know, you're at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and then you got twenty-five thousand dollar lot cost to make that. I'm not sure how you bring a house to market, kind of that average-sized house, for under two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Which has just flabbergasted me. But there may be a way. So, uh, Dan Go-Rose, some of you know, uh, has been very active in doing work in St. Genevieve City and County. And, um, has all the layouts for the park, actually, he did a topographic map for us not too many years ago, just so we kinda know what the, 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 the grades are. So he's gonna do, uh, kind of a, he's gonna let me know how much a mock-up or, or a preliminary design, just a sketch, would be for fifty lots on a portion of that ground. And, uh, if we wanna proceed with it, then the thought was we could, um, put that out for proposals from developers. And we, I've heard from the mayor and a couple of other people that there may be individuals interested in doing some development work. So if we have the parcel and we have the layout and, you know, there, then maybe they wanna, wanna give us, uh, a response to a request for, for a development proposal on the property and we could, we could get something going. But no actions needed on that now, since I haven't heard from Dan. Uh, some of you will recall that, um, a spelunker, um, named Chad McCann, uh, went down in the, he calls it the cave, we call it the sinkhole, at Progress Parkway to find out how far it went and where it went. It belongs to a not-for-profit organization, statewide organization of people who investigate caves. And their sole purpose is to, uh, identify, map, and preserve the cave systems of Missouri. And they have been working on Combs Cave, uh, for quite a while. And it's a big one, I mean, it goes for miles. Uh, but he's concerned about people who are getting in there and what they're doing and graffiti at cave entrance, and he's just, you know, not, uh, he'd like, like to participate in solving a problem. Uh, so, told him to give me a proposal, it's the Missouri Caves and Carst Conservancy is the organization. And they're proposing that somehow the city give them ownership or exclusive right, uh, to, 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 to use the cave. And they will then come in and gate it and secure it so nobody can get in there who's unauthorized. And there are two caves, uh, kind of on that same parcel of property, which is the property we're looking at for this sub, this subdivision. And, and, uh, and it wouldn't be any cost to the city, it's fulfilling their mission and it would eliminate this attractive nuisance that we own, uh, which is, which is Combs Cave. Uh, so I told him I would just lay it out, I don't have a, any formal to, to, to offer and just see how you feel about a proposal such as that. Anybody see any objection to it?
I don't have anybody else that's interested in doing something.
No, not really.
Who owns the underground rights in that area?
Mississippi Lime.
I would think that would impact them.
Well, closing, just securing the cave?
Well, I mean, any legal jurisdiction over-
Well, we can't give them the rights to what Mississippi Lime holds. And, and, you know, they have, I'm just looking at the agreements on the property and Mississippi Lime has the underground rights by the action of prior owners. That doesn't affect what we can do on the surface.
Where exactly is the entrance?
Do you know where that water park is going? If you stand on the property, uh, and you're on the street looking at the water park site, you'll see a clump, or a clump of trees kind of out in the middle of the field, and that's the main entrance to Combs Cave. But I think we'll be sensitive to that, we can certainly talk to Mississippi Lime, I can't see a reason in the world why they would object to it.
It's a good idea to secure it, 'cause you can, I walk to it.
Right.
And you can go down in it and, uh, there, there's a sign, I don't know who put the sign up, the city put the sign up?
Uh, yes, it's been up forever since I've been here.
It's now and now. It's there, but it's gone.
I don't think that no trespassing sign would-
It's not very effective.
Even if it's up?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll encourage them to proceed then, and we can bring a formal, uh, agreement to you, and I'll call Rod Shear at Mississippi Lime and check to make sure that there's nothing Mississippi Lime has to say about it, I mean, they may, they may wanna say something about it. Okay, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. No questions? Sandra, you're up.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Well, so, um, I'll just hit a couple of high points on my report, which you can read. Definitely there'll be a high point on the legislative update, but I'll save that for last. Um, Martin talked about the meeting with the U.S. Corps of Engineer reps. Um, I would like to point out that we are seeking volunteers for the Saturdays in St. Genevieve program. This starts in May on Saturdays, and what we like to do is have, uh, two people, it could be a couple, it could be a couple of friends, walk around in French colonial costume, we give them baskets with like brochures and things to hand out, and they are greeters, um, so that people can see and experience something firsthand when they're here in St. Genevieve on a weekend in the high tourism season. We're also looking for musicians, so if you have a musical talent, um, or if you can do a demonstration, we're also looking for any of those, and you can sign up for any Saturday during the summer that you would like. If there's anyone listening that wants to participate, please call the Welcome Center at eight-eight-three-seven-zero-nine-seven. Um, for the, um, uh, one of the other notes I wanted to point out was that I just got back from the Travel South Trade Show, um, which was encouraging groups to come to St. Genevieve, so this would be primarily adult tour groups. I participated alongside, um, other destinations in the state of Missouri through the Missouri Division of Tourism Program. Um, they've sponsored that the last several years in a row, and, um, we met with a lot of people and gave out a lot of information about St. Genevieve. Um, I partnered with Cape Girardeau to share a table and, uh, save costs, so we did a little pod called History on the Mississippi. Um, also, um, I wanted to point out that, um, we have one new business open recently, Sassafras Creek Originals is now open on St. Mary's Road. Um, she's open Tuesday through Saturday, nine-thirty to five. Um, she is one of the first new businesses that may be, um, locating along St. Mary's Road in anticipation of there eventually being, uh, National Park Historic Site, um, here in St. Genevieve. And she has some beautiful products and everything is, um, authentic and, um, uh, she has a, she has a, a booth at the St. Mary's Antique Mall, and that's how she knows this area, and she has a lot of loyal clients already, and so they're going to be following her here, we anticipate, and so, um, if you have an opportunity as an alderman to stop by and say hello, I'm sure she'd appreciate that. Um, and so Martin mentioned the legislative update, the time that I wrote my report for you, um, the Senate Oversight Committee had approved, uh, the standalone, uh, legislation authorizing a National Park Historic Site in St. Genevieve, and the House had already passed it from committee to the House floor. Um, just today, we received notice from, um, both Jason Smith's office on the House side, and then very late this afternoon, uh, received a personal phone call from Senator Blunt, uh, to say that the authorizing language was attached to the omnibus spending bill, and so that was passed in the House of Representatives today, and tonight, the Senate is in a late session, and they should be voting to pass that omnibus bill tonight, which would mean that the St. Genevieve bill as a part of that omnibus would be approved in the House and the Senate after tonight, if everything goes right, so cross your fingers, and the only next step would be, um, signing off by the President. So, we're that close. So, might be good to form that task force we were talking about, about next steps. So we've had some really wonderful, uh, support and help and leadership and guidance in this whole process, and, um, one of the things that the mayor and Martin and I and the heads of the Tourism Advisory Council and Tourism Tax Commission have talked about, uh, is the idea of hosting, um, uh, some sort of celebration here in St. Genevieve at a time that might work for the legislators who have helped us so much in this regard. And so, um, Senator Blunt assured me this afternoon that he would be sending us some possible dates, and he's on with the plan, so it's really exciting. Um, so there should be some new dates for your calendar, and you note, um, about halfway down, I gave you some suggested dates, um, for your calendars. The two-hundredth anniversary of the Felix Valley, uh, house, uh, was built in eighteen-eighteen, and so twenty-eighteen is their bicentennial. They're going to be having a celebration on Saturday, April fourteenth, and, um, on the following, excuse me, on the weekend of April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, which is also the weekend of the Occult de Soldat, which is an annual event here in St. Genevieve. Um, the, uh, Bolduc House Museum, now called New France, um, the Other Colonial America, will be opening what was formerly the Bank of St. Gin Building, um, you all know where that is, on Market Street. So they'll be having an open house on April twenty-eighth to twenty-ninth, there were some details in the paper on that, um, last week or so. And, um, finally, on Wednesday, April eleventh, there will be an evening, uh, training program where our local, um, chapter of, uh, Missouri Main Street Community, which is, most of you know it as the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Group, and also, more recently, they've changed their name to Downtown St. Genevieve. They have invited in representatives from the Missouri Main Street Coalition to come in and do, uh, a workshop for, uh, their Board of Directors here. It's open to the public, certainly, um, would like for any alderman who's interested to participate, to attend that, and any members of the public, um, it's also open. There will be other, um, uh, there will be other communities in the surrounding area that will be invited to, uh, participate if they would like to as well. So, that's my report. Be happy to talk with anyone afterwards who would like more information.
Did, uh, did that particular bill, did that include appropriations too?
Um, so, that's a touchy subject, it is in the appropriations, uh, language, and it does say that the Department of the Interior can spend money on it. We know the Department of Interior has other concerns, but our legislators tell us that, um, those concerns should not get in the way of some of the plans for the park, so.
Thank you, Sandra. Eric?
Uh, you have my report in front of you, pretty, pretty good and dry. Uh, I attended a nine-one-one board meeting today, uh, over at Park Hills. Uh, they have launched a new CAD system several months ago now. Um, the majority of the agencies that they dispatch for, law enforcement agencies anyways, uh, use the same reporting software that we do, it's ITI, it used to be ITI, it's Omnigo now. Uh, so they're, they're meeting to work out some issues as far as a, uh, interface with ITI, but they're hoping that, uh, pretty quickly they'll be able to start doing some, some CAD dispatching, so, so they'll be able to push calls straight to our MDT's that we keep in our cars. Uh, they also have a, uh, leg of that, that project that's going to include funding for some additional MDT's, uh, for all of the agencies that they just dispatched for. Uh, since we already have MDT's in our cars, and that's the computers that we use, um, there will be funding to, to let us upgrade what we have at, at their expense under, under that, under their guys. So, uh, we did budget to buy a couple of, uh, mobile data terminals this year, which we've held off in hopes that this project will go through, and we've also got a grant, uh, request in with the Missouri Police Chiefs Association to purchase those, so hopefully that will be money that won't be spent in the budget, so, um, everything is going, going well, I believe. Uh, we are going to work, uh, with the Health Department, uh, to, to train all of our officers on the, the administration of Narcan, uh, which is the agent to, uh, help with opiate overdoses, um-
Hey, I heard something there.
Sure.
On April the twelfth, I'm gonna ask Bill Kramer, uh, he's a citizen that, uh, his daughter had an overdose and, uh, is very interested in getting our officers and all our responders to have Narcan. He's gonna, I'm gonna have him, he's gonna do a personal appearance here, uh, 'cause they're gonna do a big, uh, training session, some lady, Nicole, can't remember her last name, is gonna come and, uh, and do a talk on April twenty-fifth at the community center, uh, clear up any myths, but, uh, I would like for him to come to talk to the board, 'cause it is our goal to get this into the hands of our, our officers. And I'll have him tell his story and, and let you know, let you know what it's all about, just so you're really educated on it, what it is. So, he'll be here, I talked to him, he'll be here April the twelfth at our meeting and do a personal appearance, so.
Well, this is something that Sabres' daughter's lot, is that what you-
Yes, yes.
And administration evidence gotta be pretty quick, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's something that the ambulance group has now, and in his particular story, and I know he'll tell it, but I believe the ambulance had an extended, uh, arrival time to, to that particular incident, which is, is not common, but can happen.
Right.
Um, so, you know, it's just kind of a, kind of an eye-opener for us as far as the availability to our officers, you know, and we'll have some logistical issues to work out with that as far as the storage and, and everything, but, uh, and I, I would like to speak with, with Mark at some point about some policies on, on some of that, just to make sure we're covered liability-wise, so.
You had expressed some concerns about dosing and decisions on-
Yes, and, and some of that will come with the training, I mean, they'll let us know what, what is acceptable, but I, I, I have some questions, it's just as far as liability, you know, with the storage and, and the administration, and, uh, you know, should they not have it with them or already used the dose that they have, you know, what, what the liabilities are. So we'll, we'll discuss that at, at some point with Mark, but I think it's a good thing for, for the city, I think it's a good thing for our officers, and, you know, certainly we'll wanna make sure everybody's safe and, and provide whatever care we can, when we can, so.
I do have some concerns over it.
As do I, as do I, so, uh, I'd like to, to sit down with you at some point.
Yeah, we're getting a little out of our lane, uh, on administering, uh, what is your prescription medication?
Mm-hmm. And, and I voiced that with, with Mr. Kramer today, and, and let him know that I would be talking to you, just to, to make sure-
I mean, other law enforcement agencies are, are doing it, some of them, yeah, some of them are not, yeah.
And it kinda, kinda goes in somewhat in line with, with CPR and having certifications and things like that, I mean, the life-saving measures that, that are, uh, available through, through different training programs, so, well, I just wanna make sure the city's covered, make sure our guy-
I absolutely agree.
And, and make sure that, that, you know, if we can't help people, we will help people, so. Um, other than that, I don't really have much, and if you guys have any questions or hearing anything, I'd be happy to address it.
See if I say we got four fugitive arrests? Great job by your, uh, staff.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, Warner arrest, we, we did have a pretty, pretty, uh, successful case recently, it, it was a marijuana distribution case, but it was pretty substantial, uh, the allegations, they've been charged federally, uh, several defendants, and there's several more people that may end up getting charged in this, but, uh, allegedly, they, they sent over three-hundred thousand dollars for marijuana, uh, involves at least one robbery where, where a person was shot, that didn't happen in St. Genevieve, but was certainly tied to this, so, uh, I've been making daily, almost daily trips to St. Louis to the federal building to, to work on this, so, uh, definitely got a lot of help from Iowa Patrol and, and the Drug Task Force. We, we pay a membership to the task force, uh, it's a budgeted item, but we certainly, uh, they, they've earned that money this year, that, in the last couple of years, we worked the, the investigation for a couple of years, but they, the analysts and, and the, uh, resources that they have were, were definitely worth the money that we've paid for, for their membership, and, and they're a great asset to us, so, I appreciate all of their help, and, and they're good guys.
I was asked today about, uh, the joint task force that we did with the Mario, who's talking about.
That Mario now? The, the-
The drug-
Oh, as far as the, the OZEDF thing? I don't know, it's, it's on their timeframe, like if they need-
We have been called.
I don't know that he's gotten any calls or anything to, to go assist them yet, um, but he's certainly on their list for availability. I, I'll have to check with him, and he may have, I don't know that he's turned in any overtime for it, but, uh, when we first signed the agreement, then we ended up having the issue with his old dog and-
Mm-hmm.
Kind of made him unnecessary again, so, I don't know, now that we've got the new dog, if, if he's been able to help them or not, but, but, you know, again, we're certainly willing and able to help where we can, so. Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you. Steve?
Evening, everyone. So you guys all have my report. Um, water side of things, Flynn was in January to, uh, inspect the raw, raw water lines and the wells. All wells came back good, they do need a, uh, a treatment. Treatment's required about every two years on those wells, they got high iron in them, um, so we need to be scheduling that as well. Um, as far as the wastewater side, one of the pumps down there at the wastewater plant has failed. Uh, the pump was sent to Van De Venter Engineering for, uh, assessment, and the pump is shot. Uh, so, that's a, that's roughly about nine thousand dollars to replace the pump, so, next meeting I'll be asking for that.
I thought we were gonna try to start using a local contractor where I've been going to Van De Venter, is that not a pump that they would service?
No, it's a flight pump, it's not, uh, Van De Venter's the rep for this area.
It's a sole source, right?
Single source, I think.
Point to go.
Let's see, Utility Services inspected the Maxwell Hill Water Tower, um, there are signs of corrosion inside that tank. Uh, there's a repaint, interior next year repaint scheduled for next year on that tank as well, so.
How long does that have to be down, where it's just that kind of-
Few days.
Two, that's all?
Yeah, two or three days.
That's good paint. Not drenched, right?
Of course.
How's our, uh, person that takes care of the water, the wastewater? Is that a, who takes care of it now? Is that a, who takes care of it now?
A gentleman by the...
Kevin's gone.
Yeah, he retired in December. We hired on a guy from over in the Lead Belt area, his name's Steve Skiles. He's got 20-plus years in the...
So he's no strange.
Yeah, he's been around it.
There you go, good deal.
So you want to comment on your find over in the Point Base area?
So me and my staff, we've been looking for sources of INI in the Point Base area and to locate the additional water source that seems to be flooding the sewer system in that area. We, so far, we've been unable to smoke test due to wet conditions. We planned Monday and Tuesday of this week, but it rained. We need to really do that when the ground's drier, lets the cracks open up and we can find smoke easier. During some video inspections, we've tried to video camera every line out there, looking for defects, and out between Progress Parkway and the end of Bosler Drive, we found a defect that was about three feet long and about eight inches wide, pretty much the entire top of the pipe we tested out. So we had to get a track hoe in there, excavate that, and we did the repairs. The following rain after that, we noticed the lift station had not, had not ran at all. Prior to that, it ran continuously, so we think maybe we found a very large source there. Once the weather dries up, ground dries up, we will continue with the smoke testing and camera inspections of those lines.
Man, that's good.
More? Thank you, Steve. Any committee reports? That brings us to public comments. Houston? We'll go ahead and let you speak now.
Good evening. Apologize for my tardiness. Good Samaritan, indeed, dude. I'm here on behalf of Hope Outdoors. Once again this year, we're hosting our, this is actually our fifth annual youth turkey hunt that we're doing, and it'll be April 6th, evening of April 6th, 7th and 8th at First Baptist Church Cheneasm, and then hunting will take place on various farms throughout the county. I'm here requesting permission again this year to be able to practice shooting shotguns with the applicants Friday evening prior to the event, and I'd ask for permission too to extend it into Saturday if there's any, you know, we need to practice throughout, into the day a little bit Saturday with any children that may be missed or, you know, need a little more confidence shooting. But I know that, you know, discharging firearms within city limits is prohibited, you know, and I'm just here to ask for, I guess, an exclusion for those, that exact timeframe. Last year, I presented a letter to the Herald the week prior, I think it was two weeks prior to the event, ran it for two weeks to give public notice, you know, and I have full intention to do that again. And anything else that you'd wish, you know, to see that we can perform this again?
We had no comments or complaints last year.
Excellent. And we'll do full barricading again. We used roundbells last year, you know, made a nice bunker, fully competent. Individuals representing us, they're helping these children shoot, very controlled situation, so.
So, any say...
Motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Takes us to the consent agenda.
What was your conclusion?
All in favor? Takes us to old business, Bill number 4212, this is the second reading, ordinance approving a zone change from an R1 single-family residential zoning district to an R2 general residential zoning district, a part of survey 219.
No problem. Second.
Need a roll call vote?
Alderman Bremminger?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prentz?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill number 4212 now becomes ordinance 4144.
Thank you very much. Have no new business or other business? Anything to talk about here, communication from the board? Lou Germain? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.